On the agenda tonight, the main items are a rezoning request. Also, we're going to be looking at a revision to the ordinance of Chapter 85 signs. Those are the main items this evening. With that, we have the roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crent.
Here.
Mr. Maxwell.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
Mr. Ullman.
We have a quorum this evening. First item or next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Approval move by Mr. Schultz and second by Mr. Edmonds. Vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is item three, the approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2012 regular meeting. Are there any changes, additions, subtractions, or?
Move for their approval.
Move as submitted by Mr. Hudson, second by Mr. Schultz. Any discussion? Vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next is item number four, public comments or items not on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak at this time on any item which is not on the current agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll close that item and move on to item five, which is a public hearing, a rezoning application, file number Z-739, proposed professional medical building, south side of Colebrook, west of Rochester Road, between Big Beaver and Waddles, 970 Colebrook, Section 22, from R1C, one family residential district, to CB, which is community business district. This is a rezoning application, not a conditional zoning, and this particular matter is brought before the planning commission for a recommendation to move on to city council where the final decision will be made. So, Zach, is that your item?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You characterize the project very well. This is a rezoning application on Colebrook. You'll be familiar with this. In recent history, you looked at the Gaucho's potential steakhouse project immediately on the other side of Colebrook. Remember, that project had a little notch that kind of came down where their parking lot was. That parking lot wall is across the street directly to the north, to kind of give you a context. There is a small outlot or a remainder parcel with an existing building immediately to the east of this, as you can see on the corner, 3545 Rochester. We're looking at the two parcels between that existing project and the single-family residential that's on Colebrook. So it is surrounded, as you can see here in the zoning, that P District immediately across Colebrook. That's the parking lot for the proposed or approved, I suppose, potential Gaucho's project, so you'll recall that. And the red outline there is these two parcels that are under consideration now, that would sort of fill in that area with community business. You can see there the greater context of the project as we zoom out, and you can see that the predominant zoning characteristics of this area are either general business or community business adjacent to Rochester Road, having frontage on Rochester Road, surrounded by a variety of R1E, R1C, R1D residential categories immediately behind. So, you know, sort of a typical zoning pattern for this area. There are a few unusual characteristics about this particular proposal that I'll, that, you know, some of the obvious conclusions you might make from looking at this drawing are not quite so obvious when we look at them in sort of a greater context. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about that as we go through this. So the purpose of this analysis is to determine on its face whether or not the rezonings to a straight rezoning categorization to community business is appropriate for this site, given some of the characteristics of the property, the master plan, et cetera. So we're going to go through the master plan, the surrounding zoning, the surrounding land uses, the potential land uses for the property after the rezoning, and the ultimate conclusion is that the planning commission will be obligated to make a recommendation of either, you know, denial or approval to the city council, which will make the ultimate decision. As you know, R1C District is a traditional, right in the middle of the breadbasket of our single-family residential categories. This is an exclusively single-family residential category. It allows, you know, some ancillary uses, retirement communities and whatnot, but predominantly this is one of our core protected single-family residential districts. The CB District is one of our new zoning districts that consolidated several old zoning districts. Our former, two lightest commercial categories were merged into community business, along with some areas, I think, that may have been originally zoned, our old office district. But basically, what you're talking about here is a broad list of uses, but the CB District is intended to provide for predominantly retail, service-oriented businesses, small footprint types, standalone businesses. This isn't really a category that you'll see very frequently associated with large-scale projects, although there are some, strip malls and stuff, which might be zoned CB. But mostly, this is going to be, you know, the old-fashioned corner store-type zoning category. It is in support of, in the new master plan and the new zoning ordinance, it is in support frequently of neighborhood nodes and is predominantly lining, you know, some of our major city thoroughfares like Rochester Road. It has less of a drive to serve like the regional public and more to drive the local, you know, the area within a mile or so is really kind of what you're looking for with CB. That being said, a very wide variety of uses are permitted in CB, from office to convenience stores. You can even have, you know, restaurants with drive-throughs under certain conditions there. So just about anything you can think of, you know, in a major thoroughfare-type situation for a small-scale standalone commercial buildings would be permitted either by special use or by right in the CB District, to give you an idea. So we're talking about a pretty significant jump. In terms of the site description itself, it's vacant, you know, there's some vegetation on the site, a tree or two. It is surrounded on the north and on its east sides with walls, sort of remnant walls from our old screening provisions from the commercial properties on either side. Across the street to the north is, as I mentioned, the Gaucho's Steakhouse property there, so there's a wall there for that parking lot. So you've got a road and a wall, a wall, a wall. And then on the west side, you've got a stand of rather mature evergreen trees, along with the single-family residents immediately on the other side of that. The property itself is, it's not real level, it's got some, you know, some grading and issues that would need to be taken care of for it to be cited. It's a pretty small property, as you can see from the parcelization there. Those two small parcels together are about the same size as one typical single-family residential parcel, like the one immediately adjacent to it. So it's pretty small. It only has access to Colebrook, and my recommendation is going to be largely based on the fact that this site, as it's proposed for rezoning, has no connection to Rochester Road at all. It is, while it is sort of a notch, you know, in this depth of commercial zoning that we have along Rochester, this property does not have access to anything but Colebrook, which sort of changes the nature of the site and how it would be used independently, and we'll get into that in a few minutes. Natural resources are no, it's not previously developed, but it's devoid of significant natural features. It's not a consideration there. Zoning land use and master plan considerations. In terms of zoning, it is surrounded by south and east, our CB. To the west is R1C, and to the north is that combination of CB and parking that you see in that drawing there. In terms of the master plan, this area is categorized as the Rochester Road future land use category, so for the planning commissioners and for the benefit of the audience and the people at home, the Rochester Road future land use category is sort of one of our soft-edged districts. This is a district that had a generalized width that was applied to the master plan document, but it's clear from the description and intent of the master plan district for Rochester Road that what we're predominantly talking about is properties fronting Rochester Road or that have a significant functional relationship with Rochester Road. Without reading the whole page and a half description of what that future land use category is about, which is included in our letter, remember that it is largely built around the fact that Rochester Road is sort of a classic commercial corridor with a lot of the traditional issues associated with an aging, you know, commercial corridor in need of upgrade. The master plan was written before the Rochester Road widening project, so the Rochester Road widening project did a lot to transform that area, although our master plan anticipated that project coming. And so you remember, we talked a lot about innovative stormwater management and trying to do a lot with a little on some of these sites. The major condition that we have along Rochester Road is that we have small properties that are packed with stuff, mostly parking, mostly building, not a lot of open space, and we've got regional stormwater detention issues around there and stormwater mitigation issues around there. And it backs right up to a single-family residential on, you know, on both sides for the entirety of its length. Rochester Road future land use category also coexists with the neighborhood node future land use category, and the idea was ultimately, if you could, you know, sort of the concept of, we had talked about the concept of a suspension bridge, you know, the neighborhood nodes are sort of these peaks of activity, and then you've got these transitional areas between. The Rochester Road District is sort of that, you know, lower intensity trough in between the two. What it looks for is a mix of land use, is anything from higher density, small scale but higher density residential projects to mixed-use buildings to office to small commercial properties, not unlike the CB or some of the GB properties that are there now. It focuses on making Rochester Road sort of a defining corridor of the community to build on the success of the widening project and the money that's been invested in redoing that there. It also looks to provide, you know, economic windfall and benefit to the, all the commercial properties that are on Rochester Road by broadening uses and empowering reuse there. What it does do is it empowered us to create the CB and GB categories, which require buildings to be, or it allows buildings to be much closer to the street, more compact, more sensitive to the environment, more sensitive to stormwater mitigation and flexibility in parking, et cetera. Now, as I mentioned, the Rochester Road category has soft edges. It's deep, but it's predominantly the width of, you know, what you'll see, you see how wide it is there. It kind of covers, you know, a couple of hundred feet deep on both sides of Rochester Road, you know. All of our future land use categories, you remember, in the zoning ordinance are not, you know, defined on a parcel-by-parcel basis because we're sort of looking for, you know, land uses to evolve and for those boundaries to fluctuate. This is important in this case because the property we're talking about is wholly within the area covered by that green polygon you see on the map there. That being said, the description of this future land use category, you know, relies on the property having access to Rochester Road, which this parcel doesn't. So it sort of changes, you know, whether or not, you know, this particular parcel is truly, you know, within that future land use category, or is it within the adjacent future land use category, which is, you know, another soft edge, which is the single-family residential. You remember, the first goal that we set for the master plan in 2008 was to protect, you know, the, protect the sanctity of our single-family neighborhoods in Troy. That was, you know, invalid, we're going to start there and build on that. So whenever we're looking at rezoning of residential property to commercial, we have to look at, how are we going to affect the adjacent single-family residential? And that's really where, you know, my description and my analysis starts here. The traffic impact and site access here, if this site were developed as a CB parcel with no relationship to Rochester Road, could potentially be detrimental to the residences on Colebrook. You do have non-residential directly across the street, but, you know, this is kind of where the residential properties start on Colebrook, and it immediately transitioned to a single-family neighborhood. Were this rezoned to CB straight up with no conditions or anything, the applicant could put, for instance, a, you know, a convenience store on the property. Not that that's bad, but that's a use that, with the kind of volume of traffic those uses experience, you'd expect it to be on Rochester, not on a side street like this. You could put an office building on this property. You could put, you know, a hair salon. Any of those types of uses could go on this property. Now, the applicant did provide a site plan along with the application. However, that site plan was not submitted as part of it as a conditional use approval, so it's not binding. But what we do know is that the applicant's sort of speculative idea was to put a 4,000 square foot office building and associated parking on here. Now, not having done a complete site plan review and understanding that that site plan, you know, has no real bearing on what we're, you know, approving or not approving, there's no way you could meet the ordinance requirements and put a 4,000 square foot office building on here. It basically, you know, they had parking, yeah, you'll see there, parking that went all the way out to the right-of-way line in violation of our ordinance. No room for screening, no room for stormwater detention. The building is, you know, it's basically an entirely paved site, there's no open space. Best I could thumbnail figure, you might be able to get a building half that size. You might be able to get a 2,000 square foot building on the property in order to have, you know, the parking and still meet the open space requirements, maneuvering, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, knowing the intensity of what the applicant thought, you know, might be conceivable on the property, you know, I just am here to tell you, that's not part of the application, but there's clearly, you know, there's no way without a massive number of variances that you could do something of that intensity on a CB parcel of that size. But if that project didn't go, you could conceivably do, like I said, a commercial property setback from the road. There's lots of different things you could do. So, you know, what do we think? What I think is that ideally, you know, a parcel like this, it would be a no-brainer to rezone it to CB, to me, if it were associated with the property on Rochester Road that's immediately to the east. Now, that property is owned by the city at the moment, and currently it's being used as a construction office. There isn't existing building there. There is a process for, you know, land use, or land acquisition that's owned by the city. It goes out to bid and all that. You know, if the controller of that property came in and asked for rezoning for this under a condition that it would be integrated into one site, I would immediately support it because it has consistent depth with all the other commercial properties in the area. It makes sense. It's within the Rochester Road future land use category. It would create an aggregated parcel of significant size where you could do a project that would meet many of our master plan and zoning objectives. But as proposed, separated like that, you know, you have only access to Colebrook and you would be generating commercial or office traffic at, you know, an unlimited number of hours. It's on a residential street, there's a lot of issues there. So, you know, given that, I think that it would be very difficult for that site to meet the, you know, to protect the sanctity of the residential neighborhood there. It would be very difficult for it to meet the master plan without being integrated with the parcels that are on Rochester Road. And for that reason, the way that it's proposed right now, being on its own and having no conditions, I recommend that we don't support the rezoning at this time and that the planning commission make a recommendation of denial for the proposed rezoning to the city council.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Brannigan? All right. Is the petitioner present? Would you please come forward? Welcome. Good evening. Please tell us who you are and sign in and then tell us about your.
Is there a way I can?
They'll have an easel for you. Forthcoming.
My name is Artur Kokai, and I'm with Arco Design Associates and representing the applicant, Steve Mucci. Sorry I'm late. There's a lot of traffic out there tonight.
Take a deep breath and tell us about your request.
When the applicants came to me with the two parcels, we looked at it, and being a residential street, we kind of agreed that the best, the best thing to do would be to have some sort of an office slash medical building. And that's what we did. Now, when I looked at the different zonings, the community business seems to be, seems to be the perfect one for the site. Now, the site is a little bit unique in itself because in all, in three sides, it's surrounded by commercial properties, and only on one side, which would be to the west, it's abided by residential property. So so in itself, it's really difficult, it's really difficult to develop as a residential property. I mean, you look in front of you, hey, it's a huge parking lot. You look to the right of you, you know, it's just, it is a screen wall, not that good-looking either. And then so, same thing to the back. So as a property, it would be very difficult to be developed as a residential. The other problem, well, not necessarily problem, but the other thing we looked at was the size of the building that we could put in there. Well, looking at the ordinance requirements, the square footage for the building, the heights, the number of stories, everything seems to fit within the community business zoning. As far as storm detention and some other points that were brought up by the consultant, I mean, that is fine. You know, engineers nowadays are really creative as far as storm detention. We could do, you know, some kind of underground storm detention. So it's a lot of different things we can do, which would be taken care of, not at this time, but at a later time. Now, as far as the building size goes, we're not going to say that it's not, you know, it's not negotiable, you know, but as far as the community business goes, the zoning, you know, it seems like it would fit in there. Now, I do understand that it's not currently zoned community business, but my applicant just lives down the street, so he has no intention of putting a building that in any way would deteriorate it or, you know, take away from it. So it is, it is interest to actually have a building in there that actually fit, and that's why. This is preliminary, but if you got approved, the building.
You need to, sir, we can't hear you if you step away from the microphone.
If you got, if you got approved, the building would be, that would have a totally residential look, so it wouldn't take away from the residences. As you can see, doesn't look any different than a two-story residential house. So, you know, with that in mind, I don't think it would take away anything from the neighborhood. We have, I don't have a pointer here, but we're going to, we're going to put as much landscaping as we can and then even more if we have to. We don't have, we don't have a problem working with the city as far as that goes. As our screen requirements, we'll do, we'll do even double what is required if we can. So we don't, we're not worried about that in any ways. The parking, the parking for the medical, for the medical building is actually, I believe it's 300 square foot per car? No, it's 200. 200, sorry about that. It's 200. So they'll require, I don't remember the number exactly.
Spaces.
How many?
Twenty spaces.
Four thousand square foot building requires 20 spaces.
Okay. Now, if it was a professional building, that would be 300 square foot per, I mean, 300 square foot per car, which would require even less cars. So we have, looks like we have, the parking is more than ample, what we show in our plan. So, so in a nutshell, you know, when I created the site plan, we looked, we looked at all, you know, we looked at all possibilities, and that seemed to be, that seemed to be fitting for the site. Again, you know, we are open to suggestions and any other good ideas that, you know, you might have.
Sure. Are there any questions, the petitioner? Mr. Brannigan, would you?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to hit on a couple of things based on the applicant's summary there. First, I just wanted to reiterate and keep in mind that we cannot consider the site plan as part of this application because this is a straight rezoning. We're looking only at the appropriateness of the zoning in this circumstance, given the site circumstances.
Right, exactly.
So to reiterate that, and I know you're all well aware, I just want to make the audience aware that we are not looking at this proposal per se. Second of all, I just wanted to note, and, you know, the applicant hasn't had the benefit of a site plan review. He does have a plan there that shows 20 spaces, but a good number of those spaces would not be permitted as designed by our ordinance, that site plan review that's been given to you. So just keep that in mind. When I stated that 20 spaces in a 4,000 square foot building wouldn't fit on a site, even though he has a drawing showing they would, that's because about eight of those spaces would have to be removed in order to comply with other elements of our ordinance. I figured, you know, you might be able to get 12 to 14 spaces with a building of that footprint, meaning that it would significantly reduce the maximum square footage of the building. It's somewhere around, you know, probably around 2,400 square feet at the most is probably what you could fit, unless you got really creative or there was a waiver given for parking. So I just wanted to, he hasn't had, you know, it hasn't had the benefit of a site plan review to know that, but.
Right.
I just want to bring that to your attention.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification to add on to what was just mentioned is, if we rezone it, you can do whatever you want in terms of any kind of a building. There's nothing that forces us or tells us that you are going to build what you say you're going to build once it's rezoned.
Correct.
So that's number one. Number two, actually, everything as mentioned that you're bringing before us, part of the site plan review process, has no merit on our evaluation as it relates to whether or not it should be rezoned. So I think those are very important elements, but I just wanted to point out to you, did you get a copy of his report, the Carl Wortman report, by any chance?
Yes, I did.
Did you see that last sentence where it says that we recommend that, no, we recommend, however, we would like to make the applicant aware of the fact that conditional rezoning is an option. So you should consider that or you should look at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stratt. Do you have a question?
Could I respond really quick? No, just wanted to respond. Well, as I briefly mentioned earlier, you know, my client is, does live, does live in a neighborhood, so in no way, you know, would we do something that, again, would take away from the neighborhood. Our intent is to do professional slash medical building, and as the far, as the size goes, again, you know, at this time, it is still infantile, so it's still, it's still a beginning. So, you know, with that, with that in mind, I think that, you know, we wouldn't, as far as conditional rezoning goes, I mean, we're not against it, but again, you know, I don't, I don't even think it's needed in this case because, you know, that is, that is what is going to be developed, as far as, as far as we are concerned.
Well, you're saying you're assuring that you won't do anything to touch on the neighborhood, but in a conditional rezoning, you would offer conditions to the project that would definitely provide some assurance of what you're saying, so I think you really should consider it as others are saying.
Well, the only thing about that would be, let's say, if it is a medical office right now in the future, sort of medical office would be, I don't know, some other kind of an office. So those conditions.
You can add those conditions in, though. You can build that kind of flexibility into a potential application.
Okay.
Just so you know that.
Okay, that's fine. No, I didn't know that. Thank you. No, that's what I'm asking.
Mr. Sevigny?
Just before I say anything, I want to, the planning commission is well aware of this. The planning commission does not have the authority to require you to submit a conditional rezoning, okay? It's got to be done voluntarily. So they can't, we can't force you. You have to want to do this. I think you heard, you know, you've read, you've read the recommendation, which I agree with, and you'll hear some, maybe some dialogue here and hear the direction the planning commission is going in. If you do choose voluntarily to enter in a conditional rezoning agreement, you would submit a site plan and you'd submit also a conditional rezoning agreement, which is a legal document. In the site plan and the conditional rezoning agreement, you can build in some flexibility. So you've got, you know, you won't necessarily be tied to just medical. You could perhaps medical office, general office, you could even, you could even come up with some other alternatives that are going to work for everybody, for the applicant as well as the city. It's negotiated, but it's voluntarily entered into by the applicant. So I want to stress that, this, we're no way requiring it, but you can build in flexibility is what my point.
Okay, very good.
Anything further? Mr. Schultz? Oh, you have, Mr. Edmonds?
Well, I heard you say that your client lives right down the street. That's wonderful, you know, we certainly encourage that. However, if we rezone a piece of property, there's no guarantee that that client will be the future owner. So all those impacts of rezoning that property then become the responsibility of the residents, so.
Of course. Thank you. Mr. Tagle?
I have a question for Mr. Brannigan. Even if the petitioner came back with a conditional rezoning, what's your feeling on the fact that this parcel is separated from Rochester Road and has its only exit onto the residential street?
I would say that, you know, a quick, brief history on conditional rezoning would help, you know. A conditional rezoning was put in place because a lot of communities had, let's say, unlike Troy, we've got a lot of zoning categories because we're a larger community. Lots of communities in Michigan had like five zoning districts, you know? They had like a C1, C2, single-family residential and another. The difference between their two commercial categories may have been gas stations is a classic example. You're on a corner, it's zoned like their lower-intensity commercial. The guy comes in and says, I want to rezone it to the higher-intensity commercial because I want to put a gas station here. Unfortunately, in that community, gas station district, you know, it also allows like, you know, every, you know, every dangerous use in the world. Nobody wants that. So what he says is, I'll, well, I'll voluntarily sign a legal agreement that says, the only reason I'm doing this is to put in a gas station. And then it prevented the community from having to invent another zoning district in between or some other mechanism. It was sort of a go-around, you know? So use is really, a lot of times, what we're talking about when we're looking at it, you know, you wouldn't be rezoning if use wasn't the issue, right? You know, we rezoned because we're looking for a different set of uses that are permitted. In this case, there are a lot of uses that are in the CB District that I think could be planned to be very compatible with the area. That's why I, you know, mentioned that at the end of my review. That's why I, you know, mentioned that at the end of my review. And we also mentioned the fact that, you know, first of all, you know, if you came in with, you know, I, I'm not, not saying that you, you know, should try to acquire the parcel to the, to the, to the east, it's owned by the city, but that parcel will become available, and the city will go out for bid to sell that, you know, this owner or this applicant notwithstanding, you know, the best situation for, for, for us from a planning standpoint would be if somebody, whoever is successful in obtaining that remainder parcel on Rochester, came in for a rezoning with these two parcels, and a condition of that would be, "I'm going to integrate these into one big parcel," you know, "and do something related to this," and it's going to have predominant access on Rochester. That would be a great conditional rezoning, that would be easy to review. Now, to get back to your question of whether or not, is there any scenario, if this stayed by itself and only had access to Colebrook, under what circumstances, you know, would we conceivably think about approving it, or would it work out? I think that if there was a condition that it would be, you know, limited to one of the much lower intensity uses, like such as, you know, I mean, a professional office, a place of employment like that, or even a medical office, I think, could probably coexist here. It's commercial across the street, next door, and to the south. It is a gateway to residential, but it's still got an eye towards this. If it had some site planning characteristics built into the condition, like maybe a single point of access, a limitation on hours of operation, if it had a limitation on lighting, if there was plenty of transitional screening, if they used one of our prescribed screening treatments that's in Article 12 of the new ordinance, you know, those kind of scenarios, it would obviously have to be a whole package, because the thing is that the conditional rezoning application would have to be focused on that concept of protecting the single-family neighborhood first, and then the benefit of being CB next. So there are uses in that district, and there are site planning mechanisms in place in our ordinance where you could do it, but without any of those assurances, I personally don't feel comfortable recommending a rezoning to this category, knowing that, you know, as Mr. Edmonds and others had said, we'd have no guarantee that, that he would be the owner, or that he even is ultimately the owner of this property during this transaction, so, you know, there, there's no guarantee there, and I would be uncomfortable recommending it without those assurances in place.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing. Do you have a seat just a minute, please? You'll get a chance to speak more. But is there anyone present who would like to speak on this matter? I'll come forward, sir. If you would please sign in, tell us who you are, and...
Well, I'm Dallas Porsham, and I own the property of Trombley.
Was the sheet taken, where, the sign-in sheet, is it missing?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm at thirty-five one five Rochester Road, and I just want to know, I would like to see that property combined with the front piece of property, because if, if something like this goes on Colebrook, what's going to happen to that small piece of property on Rochester Road? Juiceless now. There's not enough parking for anything, and I think the perfect scenario would be to combine that piece of property with the property on Colebrook, and build something in compliance with the two existing parcels that are between Trombley and Colebrook. Then they would all be the same size, but for something like this to happen, the city's going to have to decide what they're going to do with that front piece of property. Either put it up for sale, or have somebody come in and do a site plan with all three, or with the residential rezoned, and taking on that part that the city owns now. And I think that would be the best scenario for the whole thing. Otherwise, if you put something on Colebrook, you have that corner piece of property one day, you can't, it's useless, other than the city having it for a parking lot in a small planning area. And it's, that would be what my suggestion. I would like to know when the city is, if they're going to continue to use that piece of property as is, or if they're going to put it up for sale. And I would like to see, if that happens, to make sure that all three of those properties are, are zoned the same, that one of them isn't a B1 compared to a B2, or, you know, I own a professional building on the corner, and I would like to see the same use, not go to something like a tire company, or a, a, a larger type business going in there. That's all I have to say, I, I just, I, I would like to be notified if this project goes through, or if the city puts that piece of property up, and, and I, I think that's the best use for it.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, well, we'll close the public hearing, then, and bring it back to the commission. Sir, would you like to make any further statement or comment? I'll allow it just briefly, and then the, the board will, or commission will deliberate.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say that the, my client, the applicant, actually did try to purchase a property in front, I think it was, it was a few years back, so that was an attempt made, you know, it didn't go through, now there's, there's another chance to do that, but, you know, I, I don't know if there's any guarantee that, you know, he can purchase it as it goes for a public bid. So, so basically, what I'm trying to say, to, to make this short, is, you know, I'd like to focus on the property that, you know, we are trying to rezon tonight, or the property that we're here for, I mean, it is a standalone property right now, we would love to have the property in front, in front of it as well, I mean, to the east of it, but, but for right now, you know, that's what we have. And, you know, and I mentioned this briefly earlier as well, you know, as, it is on residential, that that piece of property is basically dead, nobody would want to build a house there, nobody would want to buy a house there. I mean, that's, I mean, that, that is the bottom line, so, so either way, you know, something, something has to be done, you know, in my opinion, because that property there, that's, it's, it's a unique property, that's, that's what it is.
Well, just so you know, we're just here to make a recommendation on the rezoning to city council, city council makes the final decision, so tonight we're just making a recommendation one way or the other. Okay, so, well, thank you very much, would you have a seat, and...
Thank you very much.
We'll deliberate. Any comments? Mr. Schultz?
If there's no deliberation, I'm ready for a resolution.
Go ahead, you make a resolution, I have a comment I want to make after that, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to start by saying that I personally feel that a, a basic rezoning of this property at this time has the potential to be detrimental to the residential community, therefore, resolve that the Planning Commission hereby recommends to city council that the R1C to CB rezoning request located west of Rochester Road on the south side of Colebrook within Section 22, being approximately ten thousand five hundred square feet in size, be denied.
I'll second that. Your motion, Mr. Schultz, and second, from Mr. Crutcher, there any discussion on the motion? I guess the only comment I would like to make regarding this is, it's very important, I think, that this project have a connection to Rochester Road, I think it, it will have a detrimental effect on Colebrook, if it's a standalone on Colebrook. Another thing I, I want to mention about this site, as far as Colebrook is concerned, it is a lead-in street to Waddles Elementary School. Now, again, Waddles isn't right on top of Rochester Road, but this is an elementary school neighborhood, and I am somewhat sensitive to putting commercial on streets that are tied in with elementary schools. I don't want to, really want to bring commercial there. However, if there is a connection to Rochester Road, in which Colebrook is, I have to use to, for egress, and so on, or coming in and out, then that would be more amenable to this particular type of project, so. If there's nothing further, we'll have a vote.
Mr. Maxwell?
No, or yes, I'm sorry, yes, on the...
Yeah, the recommendation, recommendations for denial, they dial, yes. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Quint?
Yes.
All right, the motion for, recommendation for denial has passed. Now, it's on the city council for that matter. Well, next, we have Item Six, which is revisions to Chapter eighty-five signs, and this presentation will be done by Mr. Savinat, or Mr. Brannigan? Mr. Savinat, right?
I'll make the presentation, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be, it's relatively brief, and I would note that Paul Evans is in attendance this evening, and Paul is instrumental, and he's really administers the sign code, Chapter eighty-five, so he's had, he's had input in the, in the revisions of this, to the Chapter eighty-five from the beginning, and he's also attended all the meetings that we've discussed the sign ordinance at, so. Basically, as you, as a Planning Commission is aware, the city of Troy ordinance was comprehensively rewritten, it took, it took a couple of years, and it was adopted, the new ordinance was adopted April eighteenth, two thousand eleven, and became effective April twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven. And during the rewrite process, the Planning Commission discussed whether to include sign provisions in the ordinance, or keep them out of the ordinance, and we, we decided that since they were separate, we would, we would, they would remain separate moving forward. And since the new zoning district was, was adopted, there are now some inconsistencies between the zoning ordinance and Chapter eighty-five. Most of those, most of those inconsistencies involve the renamed and newly created and sometimes some eliminated, you know, some of these, these new districts. So what we're proposing is, is, is basic amendments, revisions to Chapter eighty-five to make the document consistent with the zoning ordinance. And that's all we're proposing at this time, is, is, is revisions, revisions to make the two documents consistent. You will recall that we got into some pretty detailed discussions about some directions that the Planning Commission would like to see with the sign ordinance moving forward. At this time, we have not, we have not been given direction by city councils that are really moving that direction. When we are given direction by city council to do so, we will do so, but our charge right now, in the short term, is to make the documents consistent, so that we, when we administer the, the sign ordinance, it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. Right now, we're doing some interpretation, and kind of, from a common sense basis, but it's not, we really, really need to bring the ordinances together to revise the sign code, so that it's clear when we administer. So what we did is we made some basic revisions, it's, it really, the revisions are in Section eighty-five, point oh-two, point oh-five, and if you look at your document, that's in front of you, it's about halfway through here, and it, the changes that we propose are, it starts on page eighty-five dash eleven. The section eighty-five point oh-two, point oh-five is allowable signs, and what we did is we kind of struck out all the text that, that's there, and we, we, to make it easier to kind of follow, we, we struck, we struck all the text out, beginning, actually, in under C, and we added new text that was consistent with the, with the zoning ordinance. And our biggest change, so, so the first thing we did is we, we made the, the zoning districts consistent, for example, you know, M1 is now IB, you know, was our existing, that was changed, that's proposed to be changed. We added, so the, the, the new districts are consistent. There's some other districts that weren't, that we, that were created on the, under the zoning ordinance, for example, PV, planned vehicle sales. The, the, a lot of the, the office districts were renamed, the business districts were renamed, those are all revised. And we also completely, we introduced three new districts, three, the form-based districts, the Big Beaver, the Maple Road, and the Neighborhood Node form-based districts. And what we did for those districts is we essentially carried over the provisions that are, that are proposed for the, the business districts, we also added one pedestrian-scale wall sign or projecting sign per tenant, not to exceed twelve square feet in area. And the intent of that was to allow tenants or owners to have pedestrian-scale signage above and beyond what's visible from the road. So you get to, you get to have your signs that are visible from the road, in addition, pedestrian scale, because the, one of the, one of the goals of the Neighborhood Node district is to have, is to be more walkable and, and increase pedestrian, pedestrian activity. So relatively simple revisions to, to bring the two documents into compliance. Paul, have you got anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. He's a man of many words. But Paul, Paul's been very helpful in, in this project from, from the beginning.
That's terrific. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
In my opinion, it's a fatal flaw, and I think this revision is dead on arrival, as far as I'm concerned. Two years ago, when we were discussing the revision of the zoning code, we discussed specifically some concern about digital signs. And the direction of the Planning Commission at that point was, that your suggestion, Mr. Savinat, that we defer that, and after the zoning code was enacted by city council, we could direct our attention to the sign ordinance. And we did. The first draft we received some time ago, again, had nothing in it regarding digital signs. And you indicated, and I think our planning consultant indicated, they had a lot of experience in this area, they were familiar with it, and they could put something together. This ordinance, under signs prohibited, says specifically flashing signs, flashing or intermittent illumination of signs shall be prohibited. That's a digital sign. We're in the twenty-first century, digital signs are occurring all over, we've got some in Troy. We express some concerns about their brightness, their illumination, the frequency with which they're changing. And for this ordinance to say, "We're just going to ban them," we're looking backwards instead of forward. And I particularly am disturbed by this addition in the memorandum saying, "Additional revisions would be considered in the future if the Planning Commission was directed by city council to make additional revisions." Digital signs, in my opinion, are within the purview of this Planning Commission, and to take this approach and bar it, and look backwards, I'm prepared to vote against this. I, I think it's good to have some coordination between the new zoning ordinance and the sign ordinance, I'm for that. But if we've got to pass this, and now we're in a no-man's land, until someone in city council gets a majority to say, "Well, let's take a look at digital signs," that's not going to happen. I think we ought to finish what we started.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I concur with the comments that have been made, and in addition to this, I see this as being another Band-Aid to a, what, two-hundred-twenty-year-old zoning ordinance that we've had. We've talked about all the different things that we wanted to create in the new zoning ordinance, I think it should be a study session that we actually prepare the recommendations to the city council. I don't think that we have to wait for the city council to direct us, I think we should be making a recommendation to the council as to what we feel should be done with, with the sign ordinance. That's my position, I'd be voting against it as well. I, I just, I'm, again, it's a Band-Aid, I, I really, I like to see us have a study session and review the sign. We're not real busy right now, there's no reason why we can't be actually slithfying this thing, and, and getting it to the point where we really want it to be. It may take two or three sessions, it may take even more, but I do think that we need this to be revised.
Mr. Schultz?
I have a question. I know we've taken a proactive approach on Chapter eighty-five, but either Brent or our legal counsel this evening, welcome, can address this. Actually, is it not correct that our purview is Chapter thirty-nine?
That is correct. You, you, are, your, your purview is Chapter thirty-nine, and city council does everything else?
But we, we as a body have taken, in, in concert with the new master plan and zoning ordinance, we have taken a proactive approach to signs, because it's, it is a concern. So I support Mr. Stratt's comment that we need to come up with a recommendation to city council, that we be given the authority to address the sign ordinance in detail. Otherwise, I think this is a reasonable change to bring it in compliance with the zoning districts to our new zoning ordinance, but I think it's to the point now that we need to make a recommendation to city council, that they give us the authority to take a full and complete look at, at the sign ordinance, Chapter eighty-five, and that, Mr. Hudson, would include digital signs, which you know I am also a huge proponent of controlling digital signs, because they are blindingly bright.
Well, I agree, except that, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. We made a decision at the suggestion of the planning department to omit this from our zoning, and we properly, in my opinion, could have included a section in our redoing of the zoning ordinance to include signs. So I, I think too, and I appreciate your, your thought, Mr. Schultz, that maybe it's thirty-nine, but I'm not going to be a technician on this, I, I think that we had a chance, and I don't know if we're blindsided, but I, I take offense, that it's not part of this, and I'd like to go ahead. I don't think I have to wait for city council to tell us to do this, I think that we can make a recommendation. If they don't want to accept it, that's up to them, but I think we can make a recommendation, and we should.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Lancaster?
I think that if you look at Chapter eighty-five as being part of an ordinance, and I think one of the reasons why this was moved from Chapter thirty-nine was because it's not really a zoning provision, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with planning, it does have something to do with signage. And to tell you the truth, most other cities' ordinances do not include it under a zoning provision. It, it would be like asking this board to look at the fire code, Chapter ninety-three, or the criminal code, and, and make some suggestions, and I know that's a little far-fetched, because certainly everybody on this board is well-qualified, you look at signs all the time. I don't think, I think Mr. Schultz's suggestion might clear the way, because one of the things I do know about city councils, they appreciate this board's opinion, but they also direct our office in what work we're assigned to do, and frequently, a board will ask us, "Can you look at an ordinance?" And we will tell them, "Direct something to city council and ask for some clarification, so that we can give priority to what you're requesting." So it might be easier for you to have input if you clarify to city council what you would like to do, and I think you would get a positive response from them in terms of the fact that they do appreciate your input. And I don't know that that would, could be done by just a motion, and, and your minutes would be sent up to city council, so that they would know you're interested in, in giving some input regarding this particular ordinance. I don't know if this information is helpful, but I think if, if you're really intent on doing this, it would make it a lot easier for you to, for particularly our office and even Brent's department, to... to get their direction from Council that they want you involved in this because then we're getting instructions from Council to work with you on it.
So, Ms. Lancaster, in your opinion, we would have to, it would be best for us to request of City Council they would consider, or let them know we would, we would like to provide input to City Council on signage and request their permission to do so, or?
It would not only be there, it depends on what you want. I don't think anybody here has any problem with you reviewing the sign ordinance and making suggestions. We all appreciate your input because of what you all do. You're all good at planning. That part, we're willing to do with you. If you want to do study sessions, or rewrite it, or redraft it, or take any kind of authority to actually redraft it, I think it might be helpful to get some direction from Council. So it depends on how far you want to go with this. If you want to set up work-study sessions, I would suggest you go to Council and ask if you can just expand your authority for this one particular project and, and actually have study sessions on it that, and, and present an ordinance to them. If not, if that's not what you really want to do, if you just want to look at it and make suggestions, I don't think anybody here has any problem with that, do we?
Well, we've already looked at the, at the site ordinance for a while. It seems that the area, primary area of interest is digital signs. I don't know if we need to go through everything else at, at this point. I think something more in regard to digital signs seems to be indicated. Could we have a study session just on the digital sign language of this proposed ordinance?
Mr. Chairman.
And then forward, forward on that information to City Council with a request to do anything, something further? Would that be something maybe possible, as far as, or appropriate, as far as you're concerned?
Well, again, I guess it depends. I guess you could call it a study session and just for the sole purpose of not, for just making suggestions. And I think you could do that.
Right. First time by suggestions at this point, nothing formal.
Right, nothing where you're rewriting it, or you're just, a study session to offer suggestions regarding the sign ordinance. I think you could do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I should. Chairman, I think it's far more than just the digital signs that I'm referring to. I think it exceeds a lot more. And as far as a comment, I, I don't know if I heard this correctly, but I know of several communities that I have been before that the sign ordinance is a part of zoning ordinance. The upper crust, which I like to consider, the upper crust communities do have that. Some of the other ones, smaller communities, do not. But I'd like to think of us being a leader, not a follower. And I like to see us incorporate that as a part of that. I'd like to, I think that's important even as a part of the site plan review process that we go through. Signage is very crucial to the overall site plan review process. I, that's my opinion. And I, I frankly think it's far more than just the digital sign that we want to look at.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Schultz had an excellent suggestion that we had talked about it several months ago. And since right now, we haven't had a, a study session, I don't know how long, I think it's an ideal time now that we're kind of on the low side to actually try to improve what we've got right now. And that's my opinion, I.
Mr. Chair. If I could address Mr. Stratt's comments. If, if that's something the board wants the Council to consider, you could do that. You could ask Council, ask them if you can take jurisdiction of signs under chapter thirty-nine. That would require, then Council would direct our office to look into whether or not that was appropriate. And if Council decided they wanted to put it back into chapter thirty-nine, you would have authority. So if that's where you're going with this, that's another option, asking Council to reconsider putting the sign, signage back into chapter thirty-nine. And again, we get our direction. We're always happy to work for you and do whatever we can. We're assigned to this board, but when we're told to rewrite an ordinance, it's usually got to come from City Council. So that's another, we can do it that way, or that's one suggestion.
Mr. Hudson, would you come in?
I don't recall City Council, City Attorney's Office, the Planning Department telling us at any time the last two years when we discussed digital signs or signs verboten, you can't do it. This is no different than me as a citizen going before City Council at any public opportunity to speak, suggesting to them, you know, a group of us have composed or drafted a proposed sign ordinance that we think would be important for the city of Troy. We'd like you to take a look at it. No difference with this commission doing it. It's a recommendation only, we're not stepping on anybody's toes. I don't know of any other department in the city who is yanking at the bit to try and do a sign ordinance. If we can do this in a study session and make a recommendation, fine. City Council doesn't have to accept it. But I think to be told that we can't venture into that territory is incorrect.
Mr. Crabb.
Looking at our, our duties as far as the master plan's concerned, isn't the master plan, may I should direct it to Brent? Isn't, doesn't the master plan address signs to some extent? Doesn't it recommend, give recommendations for sizes or, or some kind of limits for signs? I noticed something, when we just read, it said, it said something about keeping signs for the Rochester Road at a minimal. It does make recommendations. And, and there's no, no legal ability that we have, other than an ordinance, to, to, to actually enact those parts of the master plan. So just like the, chapter thirty-nine is, is a legal end of the master plan, I feel that chapter eighty-five is also the legal end of part of that master plan. I think it should, both of them are, are critical to implementing the master plan. So I think it should all be part of the same.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yeah, and to further that point, I think, I believe the City Council was aware that we were addressing the sign ordinances. They get our minutes. You know, they're, they're certainly aware. And I, I think this is being blown out a little bit more than it needs to be. I think, I think very frankly, this is just an administrative thing. If, if John Zerlik were to recommend to the City Council that, you know, that the, the Planning Commission is, has been reviewing, you know, it's not that we've just begun. We have reviewed. We've had several study sessions on this in the past and made several recommendations. I agree, I think this, this, this needs to go forward. And don't need to want to ruffle anybody's feathers, but I think you have four Planning Commission members here sitting at this table who are part of the voluntary sign enforcement code group. I think, you know, we are the, the appropriate entity to take care of this.
Well, we have been reviewing this ordinance for some time. I would say this, if we are not happy with this version, then we go back to our table, study session, and we comment on this version and recommend changes to it. That's what we've been doing all along anyway. So, Mr. Brink.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just, you know, remark because we had talked about the resources of Carla Warman and the resources of staff being involved in this. And I think a lot of what Susan is saying is that, you know, the, you know, the idea of going to the elected body to not necessarily seek permission, but to, you know, to authorize the resources of staff and the city's consultants from, you know, the now limited resources of staff to, to take this on because the difference between obviously, you know, a spontaneous proposal from the public to change an ordinance and, and one, you know, a staff-supported body such as yourself is obviously that there's, there's resources at hand. And we don't, you know, for instance, Carla Warman doesn't have, you know, an authorized scope in place for assisting with the redevelopment of the sign ordinance as it stands right now. So that, that's kind of the direction we're coming from. Now, you know, that being said, you know, this is not a, not a major project, and a lot of those resources are quickly at hand. And it's certainly something that I think has the support of everybody here. But at any rate, I just wanted to.
Mr. Edmonds.
So you weren't authorized to do the previous work we've already done with you on the sign ordinance?
I have not done any work on the sign ordinance to this point. I, Carla Warman has done no work on the sign ordinance for the city.
Okay, well, Mr. Hudson and Mr. Stratt. Go ahead. Do you like what Mr. Stratt?
I was just going to say, I thought that was the city manager's responsibility, not necessarily the Council. I would think that that would be the case. He's the one that actually distributes or should be overseeing everything, but I, I don't know.
I was just going to say that the Planning Department had been working in concert with us in these study sessions. So to take the position that it wasn't authorized and we're utilizing city services that hasn't been authorized is just not true.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to misspeak. I could only speak for my own services in that we haven't, we haven't worked on the sign ordinance yet. That's all I wanted to clarify.
You just, yeah, the intent here isn't to ruffle any feathers. Mr. Hudson called, called this effort a Band-Aid, and, and I agree. It's definitely, that's exactly what it is, is a Band-Aid. It's.
Correction, I was the one that made that comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, yeah, I mean.
Don't go on assault.
Sorry, Mr. Hudson. When Mr. Stratt called it a Band-Aid, that's what it is. I mean, that's what it is. It's a, it's a, it's a bare bones. It's, you know, the, the minimum effort required to bring the two, the documents into, into consistency with each other. And what I would like to do moving forward is, 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 whether you, whether you make a recommendation on this or not this evening is, you know, that's, that's your purview. But, you know, so I'd like to take this in two steps. That's my suggestion. Step one would be to make a recommendation on the bare bones Band-Aid version. That's before you this evening. And then step two would be to inform, inform City Council that your intent is to, is to move forward with, you know, with a, with a more detailed, you know, version to, to address other important issues that you have with the sign ordinance. So it's kind of a two-step process. I'm not suggesting that we, you know, leave this alone and never look at it again. I, I just think that our charge should be just one, first to bring it, just to make, to do the least amount possible. And then, and then step two to delve in and put a more concerted effort into this, into this project. It's going to take some time and some reserve. We've already done a lot of work, we've already got some great ideas. It's just a matter of, you know, taking those ideas and putting together a more, a significantly more comprehensive document.
Mr. Stratt.
May I make a recommendation? I, I've had conversation with the city manager on this particular issue, and I, I think you know that, Brent. And I don't know, but I would recommend that first you talk to the city manager on this issue rather than just saying that we have to get Council approval.
Can I, can I, and we can certainly, we can certainly take no action this evening and come back and talk about it at the next meeting. And then I can, I can come with, with ammunition and feedback from everyone, you know, from all, all the players involved and, and come forward with a plan moving forward. That's fair. That's fair.
Yes, my preference would be not to take any action tonight and then pursue this going forward. I just see it as where this is an ongoing process. To me, this is just another draft we're going to look at and make comments on and go forward, so. Any further comment? Do we need a motion to take, we don't need a motion to take any action, we'll just move on. Wait for further information at the next, next meeting, next study session. All right, next item is item seven, Planning Commission, 2011 Annual Report. Mr. Savinat?
Yeah, I'm going to put Zach on the spot for a second. I like doing that. Zach, as you know, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires that municipal planning commissions prepare an annual report to the township board or the City Council, kind of outlining what they did in the previous year. How many, what percentage of planning commissions that you're aware of that actually do this?
What percentage of overall, or?
Yeah, in your experience, does it happen very often?
Well, given that you guys are, you know, about seventy-five percent of my workload right now, seventy-five percent of my clients do it, so, you know. You guys are the only ones that, that provide, you know, a professional annual report like this, and I think it's extraordinarily valuable. It is something that you're required to do. I've seen annual reports that are basically one sentence in the, you know, the December minutes that are just like, oh, and this year, you know, we, you know, we, we have thirty-seven dollars left in the training fund, and that's our annual report. So, you know, what Brent has prepared here, I, I, this is not staged or anything, but I will say what Brent prepared here is, is excellent. If you had something like this for every year of your existence and you could look back, it's an invaluable document.
So this is something, before you heap too much praise on me, Zach, this is the first time it's been done here, so. You know, I can't take too much credit here, but this is something that, that's been kind of on the to-do list for a while. And as Zach said, I think it's important, you know, for the, looking back ten years from now, you know, this, this is a, a public record here, I think, is going to be very valuable. So it basically summarizes what, what was the Planning Commission did in 2011. And when you write it all down, we accomplished a lot in 2011. We really did. I mean, it's something to really be proud of. You know, we even, we, we had to cancel a couple of meetings because of, because of lack of applications. But when you really start, start looking at all the things that we did, boy, we were busy. We got, got a lot done. And I'm not going to read over all this, you know, everything that was accomplished because it's all in front of you. But, but good job, Planning Commission. I mean, it was an excellent 2011. What I would like to do with this is, so your charge this evening is to consider this, and if you, if you, if you like what you see, perhaps make a, make a motion or approve a motion to present this, to send this forward to City Council as, as required by the Municipal Planning Act. But we can, we can discuss this if you like.
Mr. Schultz.
I'm prepared to make that motion if anyone, if no one else has any additions they would like to make.
Any changes?
Before he does that, I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Please, Mr. Hudson, go ahead.
I chewed on the Planning Department and our consultants on that last issue of signs, but I want to tell you, when I saw this, Brent, I was thrilled. This is an excellent piece. I was just in awe, thinking that it's just a simple piece. It certainly summarizes what we've done. We've done a good job, and you're to be commended for putting this together. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Stratt.
Actually, Brent, we're not followers, we're leaders. And you're, you're showing that, and that's great. I, that's the kind of thing I like to see. Is I don't care what, how many other communities have done or have not done. I'm concerned about we're leading the pack and we're showing the way, the way it should be done. It's excellent, that's great. I really commend you, both of you for doing that.
You know, I mean, when you, when you do look at this, I do think that, you know, I know Brent doesn't want to go through this because it, you know, and it, this is sort of a, you know, planning commission patting itself on the back type of situation. But when you do look at this list, it is, it is not just impressive, it's extraordinary because you adopted a comprehensive zoning ordinance rewrite. You know, many communities, that would be the only thing that you really would be able to accomplish all year long. In addition to that, you maintained a busy, regular docket. And you look, there's a whole list of, you know, I mean, we, you know, a dozen preliminary site plan approvals, rezonings, other things that went on. On top of that, remember, you know, we did reevaluate elements of the master plan, adopted the Big Beaver Design Guidelines, which was a year and a half project in concert with the DDA, which is extraordinary. We've made zoning ordinance amendments. We innovated in the areas of sustainable development by including the new Sustainable Development Checklist in our development procedures. You know, it's, it is actually remarkable, the tools that have been put in place. And I can say from, you know, you guys don't get to see on a day-to-day basis how Brent and I, and, and Paul, for that matter, and our department are able to use these tools, you know, when people walk up to the counter. And the response that we have gotten for being a, you know, a partnership city and a leader in the area of economic development, using our zoning ordinance as a, as a primary tool to say, hey, we don't have to say no as much anymore. What we have to say is, these are the rules, and, you know, if we can follow these playing rules, you know, we can start saying yes a lot more to some innovative new development type in the city. And some of the things that you're going to see in 2012 and 2013, I think, from applicants coming into this city using these new tools are, are, are going to be, you know, very, very exciting for the region. So I just want to congratulate you on all of this stuff, and thank you for letting us be a part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds.
Yeah, I would just hope too, that as part of the resolution, that you recommend that this also be placed on the Planning Department website.
I just wrote that down, Mr. Edmonds.
Thank you.
Mr. Stratt.
Speaking of reports like that, what's happening with the ZBA? Are they actually providing such a thing as that? I'll tell you, I'm on a ZBA, and I can tell you that that ZBA is one of the top-notch ZBAs at this point in time as far as professionalism. I'm very, very impressed with them. They've accomplished an awful lot as well. I don't know, Paul, but I would think that a report such as this could be actually drafted up for the ZBA. And Ms. Lancaster had a heck of a lot of input on that, explaining what could or could not be approved and how. I mean, it's just very, very professional. I can only tell you, I am very impressed with it. I was on a ZBA, I think it was about, I think, Mr. Schultz, you were my alternate or something. I mean, it was eight years, ten years ago, fifteen years ago.
Change of deal, hasn't it?
But it was a lot different. It is a lot different now than it was in the past. It's very professional. Just want to commend you on that.
You know what's helped? The revision of the ZBA with that new state law coming down. Completely redid that, made it much more workable. It, it contributed to that professionalism.
Yeah, I, it is very professional.
Mr. Edmonds.
The other thing that's really helped, because on the one year that I was on, the legal orientation by the city attorney, and in my case, it was Ms. Bloom, it was like day and night after she gave that orientation.
Yeah.
So I think that's critical, and I think it ought to be done anytime there's a change in, in the ZBA membership.
Mr. Schultz, why don't you go ahead with your motion?
Resolve that the planning commission 2011 annual report be forwarded to city council and further recommend that the annual report be placed on the city's website.
Well, we had a lot of support there, but I did see Mr. Tagle versus also motion from Mr. Schultz, the support from Mr. Tagle. Any further discussion? A vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes. The motion passes. Next is item number eight on the agenda, public comments for items on the current agenda. Missouri one press motion to speak on any item on tonight's current agenda. All right. So you know, we'll bring it back to the planning commission for item number nine, is the planning commission comments. And Ms. Lancaster, nice to see you. Haven't seen you in a while. Nice to see you back here, and would you like to make any comments this evening?
Just to tell you that it's all, it's good to see all of you, and it's obvious you feel very strongly about this side issue, and I'm sure it will all work out. Being kind of new after a couple of years, I'm not sure what exactly what involvement you've had, but I'm sure there are no people better that can offer some good suggestions. But you all look terrific, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Yes, Ms. Lancaster, I haven't seen you, and I don't know, it's been three, four years. You look even younger than last time I saw you.
There's a cupid.
I'm going to get a copy of that recorded. Play it frequently.
Mr. Sevina?
Reminder that there's a, there is a meeting on the 28th of this month at 7:00, not 7:30, 7:00 PM. It's a special meeting to consider a special use application for an oil change business at the corner of Heartland and Rochester. We received an application yesterday for a Tim Hortons on Maple Road, North Side, just west of John R. So there is an application pending, which is, which is always a good thing. I emailed all the planning commissioners with an update on the status of the appointments for the, there's three, three members whose terms expired on December 31st. Those members were Members Schultz, Strat, and Almond. City council nominated three planning commission members. The nominations were for Mr. Schultz, Mr. Strat, and Mr. Shepke. And Mr. Shepke is in the audience this evening. Nice to see you, Mr. Shepke. Thanks for coming out this evening. And the city council will be making, taking action on those nominations on the, on the 20th, which is next Monday. So it is possible that if it's an affirmative vote, that we would have Mr. Strat, Schultz, and Shepke on the planning commission for 2012.
Right. And that vote is the 20th?
The 20th, correct.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
No comments. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Mr. Crent? Mr. Tagle? Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Strat? Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Brink?
No, thank you.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, we've got two new alternates on the zoning board of appeals as a direct result of the new zoning ordinance requirements, and those alternates will be attending their first meeting.
Pull it a little closer.
We have two alternates on the board of appeals as a result of the new zoning ordinance. They'll be attending their first meeting at February 21st, zoning board of appeals.
Thank you very much. Well, my closing comment for this evening is I didn't quite get off the hook for Valentine's Day. I have to take out my wife on Saturday, so I'll make sure I do that. With that, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Your mind's tomorrow.